Welcome to the March 18, 2021, meeting of the Johnson County Community College Board of Trustees. I'm Greg Musil, the chairman of the board. We have all our board members here, except for trustee Smith Everett, who will be here shortly. Please help me open the meeting by reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, one nation, one public, one nation, one God, indivisible, omnipotent, just as for all.
I may have to delegate that to somebody else because I'm so nervous about it now. I even practiced it beforehand and still managed to mess it up. My glasses are fogging up, so I'm going to take those off. Thank you, and again, welcome to the meeting. We do have a quorum, and I will remind the trustees that are here, and you can pass it on to Laura when she gets here. We're expecting now an hour and a half executive session at the end of the meeting, so if that messes up your plans or whatever, I hope not, but we're going to have a little extra time, at least allotted, for the executive session. Our next item is awards and recognition, and Dr. Bam?
All right. Well, I just, we normally, and actually in the months of April and May, I know we get heavy into the recognitions and awards as a college community, but I thought as earlier this month, we had, we celebrated with a number of our students, three to be exact, students who were recognized as part of the Phi Theta Kappa, all Kansas academic team, and I know that trustee Ingram and trustee Cross were involved in the kind of the local celebration as part of the statewide network, and so it, I bring it up because it recognizes our students and the exceptional work that they do as students, and therefore it's recognition of our honors program and the tremendous work that our faculty do. And so our three students that were recognized as part of the Kansas all academic team are Jackie White, and she is from Lenexa, Kristen Wright is from Overland Park, and then, and Kat Hulley-Lichtig is from Olata, and so we have three local students who have been recognized. But the news gets better from here, and that is that Jackie White was recognized as one of 20 students nationally through Phi Theta Kappa with all USA honors. And then earlier this week, it got even better because she received yet another Phi Theta Kappa award tied to her all USA recognition, and so she has received, will receive two significant scholarships for this coming year and her as a transfer student as she moves from us to, I believe, UMKC, if I remember correctly. And so I just wanted to take a moment and recognize the tremendous work of Ann daughter, Tara Karim, and Nellie, oh my goodness, I just, pardon?
Shuckman.
Shuckman, yep, thank you, Nellie. I apologize for that, but just wanted to recognize them for their tremendous work, so.
That's great.
Thank you.
Thank you for sharing that. We normally would have them in the room where they could be recognized, and because of COVID-19 and Zoom, we're not able to do that, but maybe we can do that soon if we can get past some of this and get vaccinations distributed appropriately. The next item on the agenda is the open forum session. The open forum session is a period in each regular board meeting where we allow members of the public to speak on concerns or comments about, about college-related items. The speakers are limited to five minutes unless there are a number of speakers, in which case the chair can limit that to three minutes each. In order to be recognized, you have to register before the meeting. In the case of our virtual meetings, you need to register by 5:00 PM on the Wednesday before our Thursday meeting, so we can make sure to have you lined up. Go to our website, jccc.edu to register, if you'd like to register. When addressing the board, the speakers are asked to remain at the podium when they're in person, should be respectful, and are encouraged to address individual personnel or student matters directly with the appropriate college personnel. Typically, in this setting, the board does not respond to the matters or concerns presented, particularly if they're personnel or student concerns or items otherwise under review by the college or the board. We have two speakers registered today. The first speaker, both are faculty members. The first one is Brenda Edmonds from our math department. Brenda, you will be elevated by our technical folks, and we'll have five minutes. Thank you for joining us.
Guys, have me muted. Okay, good evening. My name is Brenda Edmonds. I live in Overland Park. I've been a math faculty member at Johnson County Community College for 26 years, 18 of those full-time. I come to you tonight to ask for your support and for you to help provide momentum for us to find some good and timely solutions for a complicated problem related to delivering in-person testing for students that choose to learn online. In the next five minutes, I'll provide as many details as possible. I've been teaching math online for 14 years. I've done and I continue to do my homework on best practices for teaching math online, attending conferences, reading about effective strategies, talking with people at colleges and universities across the country that teach math online and trying new technologies. There are some things that are very difficult about teaching math, in particular online. One is effective evaluation of what students are actually learning, in other words, assessment and testing. I am an innovator and an avid user of many alternative forms of assessment and testing. I'm currently using several different forms of testing methods, including some verbal parts of exams and project-like assessments. But there are some skills in math classes that absolutely must be assessed in a proctored setting without a student having access to every tool on the internet. Our course outlines are common across all the region's institutions in Kansas, and they include things like evaluate definite integrals using the fundamental theorem of calculus. It does not say use an app called MathWay on your phone to evaluate an integral using the fundamental theorem of calculus. A student transferring our credit from JCCC to any college or university in the country would be expected to have mastered that skill in any course for which calculus one is a prereq. If I cannot test that skill in a proctored setting, I have no way to know whether a particular student has actually mastered it. So this brings me to why I'm here with you today. Due to the pandemic, teaching and learning have been upended. A lot of things got very complicated about teaching and supporting and assessing students, but everyone at JCCC learned how to use new tools to work the best we can. In particular, proctored testing is incredibly difficult in our current situation. It's very difficult to monitor what is happening with 24 students all at the same time, and there are little individual Zoom windows. Recorded videos of students taking tests are nearly useless. I cannot intervene in real time if a student is in desperation, trying to take advantage of a situation, and some students don't have the right technology to make remote proctoring work correctly. But we're still in a pandemic now, so we're doing our best to make remote proctoring work for now, but it can't be a viable long-term solution for post-pandemic instruction for some courses at least. Once we are able to return to campus, faculty in several departments such as math, physiology, accounting, and computer program, we believe it's necessary for online courses to return to testing students with in-person proctored exams. Prior to the pandemic, we typically had about 1,000 students each semester, 1,000 students each semester, that took JCCC math courses online. Those online classes in math and other disciplines use the Testing Center for proctored exams to provide students the flexibility of taking their exams when it fit their schedule. Once JCCC can fully reopen, we need to be able to return to our previous online teaching model that allows for asynchronous learning and regular testing that fits students' schedules and helps them succeed. Many faculty are working very hard, spending altogether hundreds of hours on various committees to work within college processes to solve this problem. The Online Learning Advisory Committee, or OLAC, recently unanimously voted to reexamine the October 2020 JCCC course delivery method definitions that exclude in-person proctored exams for online classes. We're hopeful that they'll make a recommendation that, post-pandemic, we'll be able to reinstate online instruction that includes in-person, convenience-based testing that helps students succeed. This move would realign us with how online courses are structured at nearly all of our peer institutions and neighboring colleges. We're hopeful the Testing Center can adequately, again, be the resource that provides the scheduling convenience for exams that our online students need. So I am here to ask of you, trustees, and you, upper-level administrators, that you provide whatever support, impetus, and resources that are necessary to help faculty and staff at JCCC move quickly to find a solution to this problem. We need to continue to be a place that offers high-quality, convenient instruction. That includes online learning with in-person proctored exams for some disciplines, and some students really need that schedule flexibility. The Testing Center used to help us provide that, but we've been told that that will be severely curtailed when we return. This is a complicated problem to solve because there are many constraints, and the good solutions cross many branches, many departments at the college, but I have confidence that we can solve hard problems while maintaining our quality. I am asking you as the board and you as the upper administration of the college to help us to find a good solution quickly. There are a lot of issues the college is working on right now, and I don't want to-
Brenda, you're at about, you're at about six minutes, so if you can finish up, that'd be awesome. Thank you.
Class schedules are already being built for spring 2022, so we need these solutions to move quickly so we can offer classes students need. I'll send an email to each of you tomorrow with a few follow-up more points that I don't have time to discuss now. I hope you take the time to read it and follow up with any questions you have, and I encourage you to consider requesting a solution happen quickly that can help meet the needs of our students. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you for your thoughts. The next speaker is another faculty member, David Krueg, from our business and accounting faculty. David?
Am I on?
Yes. You are on, Dave.
Okay. Trustee Musil, do I need to state my address? Is that still a thing?
You know, we didn't, I didn't ask Brenda to do that. You're, you're on campus. I think we can probably pass for that. We know where to find you, Dave.
Yeah, that is true. Okay, I'll go ahead and start it. I'm going to put my stopwatch on. I've been a full-time accounting instructor at the college for 17 years. I love, love, love my job. I love serving at JCCC. I am so blessed to serve this community. I too am here to talk about the Testing Center. The Testing Center is an important issue in the way I build my classes and assess my students. We were informed as faculty in October ABC meeting that once we return to campus, the Testing Center will no longer proctor in-person exams at the same volume that they did before COVID. Further details of these new parameters or the addressing of concerns regarding them have been extremely limited, and I fear resolution of this issue is simply not occurring at a reasonable pace. Any info that I glean has been in private conversations or in meetings I initiated. We're being told repeatedly to let the process work out, and we are trying, but the Testing Center does not fall under the academic branch, but rather student services. Yes, at the end of January, there was a call for faculty to join a new task force regarding this Testing Center issue, but that task force, nearly two months later, has not even met. I believe they might be meeting in late March for their very first meeting. However, six weeks after that, the academic year is complete, most faculty will be off-contract. One-hour meetings held once a month during the nine-month contract are realistic to address this issue. There have been implications that this decision arose or was supported by OLAC or the previous Testing Center committee faculty members. That's not true. This issue is not solely about cheating. This is largely about our ability to assess students through the use of long-form problems, problems that require students to craft solutions on paper, often involving symbols and processes and all sorts of student chicken scratch that I have to read that's not easily entered or submitted through a keyboard. Creating new obstacles on how often students can use the Testing Center, well, I fear indirectly result in movement to more multiple-choice-type questions or lesser types of assessment in online classes. Online students should not be assessed and challenged in a less equitable, in a lesser and inequitable way than their peers who take face-to-face classes. This is not about faculty workload or abdicating assessment responsibilities. I simply cannot replicate the flexibility of the Testing Center for students. For example, I'm going to have to specify, specifying one of my fall 2021 hybrid course that students will have to travel to the JCCC campus on five specific Mondays from 4:30 to 6:00 PM to take their exam over which I will personally proctor. I am concerned that some students will not enroll in this now-labeled hybrid class, as I can't personally provide the same flexibility for students who live far away from JCCC or have rigid or, rigid personal or work schedules. Assessing long-form problems and all their various symbols and whatever students write down allows me to assess the thought process of my students and specifically where they're getting off track. And honestly, minimizing my workload was my goal. I would simply move to multiple-choice testing rather than long-form problems. My wife would be thrilled to have her dining table back. Cheating and academic integrity are part of this issue. I am not obsessed with finding cheaters, but it is important that our students leave the college with credits and degrees that have strong rigor and reputation with our area institutions. JCC, staff, faculty, administration, you trustees, we have worked so hard to build this reputation over the years. Thank you so much for that. Not all colleges possess this, and losing a reputation happens a lot faster than rebuilding it. Our students deserve to know the credit that they earn from JCCC will be well-respected. But doesn't cheating only hurt those who do the cheating? Well, do you want to go to a nurse or an auto mechanic or a tax accountant or a respiratory therapist who cheated their way through school? Some may say if someone wants to cheat, they'll find a way, or perhaps cheating occurs in face-to-face proctoring as well. These are logical fallacies similar to those heard last year by some individuals who refused to wear masks during COVID since masks are not 100% foolproof. My background is a CPA involved evaluating and creating internal control structures for companies. Evidence clearly proves that establishing reasonable internal controls will prevent the vast majority of malfeasance within a company. Current research is discussing this increase during cheating, and the conversations with my sons and my students echo this as well. Right now, as I speak to you Zoom, I have a textbook and a laptop and table of notes in front of me. Can you, can you tell this? No. Go to YouTube and type in how to cheat on an online exam and see what you find. We've all been quite adept at how to hold our cell phones in Zoom meetings so that no one sees it. And I'm wrapping up, trustee. My request, I'm humbly asking for a large group of impacted faculty in the highest-level administration and decision-makers to get together in a setting together at the same time to discuss this and come up with real solutions that will benefit students, solutions that can be implemented soon, preferably by mid-May. The self-governing process doesn't work when we are limited to one-hour meetings that occur once a month and only during the nine-month contract period and without all the impacted parties present. At JCCC, we have never solved problems of excessive volume of student services by revolving, by reducing those services. The fantastic efforts by the Testing Center folks, and they are fantastic. They can't be replicated with cameras and microphones, and I can't duplicate the flexibility they provide. As a CPA, I'm well aware that you can't solve every problem by throwing money at it, but we simply cannot continue at this slow pace. Let's work together to create a reasonable solution so that we can continue to serve students at the level we did before the pandemic. Thank you. I did, I, this makes me nervous to be here, and I really do apologize to anyone who's frustrated with my persistence on addressing this issue, but I'm here because I really care deeply about my face-to-face and on my online students. I too will be emailing a statement, and I really thank every one of you for your service to this wonderful college.
Thank you, Dave. Appreciate your comments as well. Welcome, trustee Smith Everett. I knew you had other obligations in your job, so we, we welcome you here. We just finished the open forum session. We're ready for board reports, and we'll start with the Student Senate President, Sailor Usher. Sailor, are you elevated?
Hi, thanks for having me. So the Student Senate is just starting our elections. They have been going strong, and the applications will be open until March 22. Candidates will have time to campaign from then until April 1, and we're planning some more intensified campaigning on the last three days of the elections. And the elections will be online and tentatively in person from the 30th through April 1st, those last three days. The projects initiatives has empowered a plan for the sustainable video contest for this year's Earth Week. From April 19, we'll be inviting students to make minute-long videos showing how to live sustainably, so recycling, eating less meat, different things like that, growing your own garden, like big tree gardens, it goes, make a comeback. On the last day of Earth Week, we're planning a scavenger hunt for April 23 from 5:00 to 6:00 PM, and we'll have different awards at that, but mostly it'll just be fun to play Kahoot. And the vice president has this in, it's like a distant scavenger hunt where you have to go find things in your house, that it's always been a crowd pleaser. And other than that, I think that's all I have to say this year. Thanks so much on this month. Thanks so much for having me.
Thank you, Sailor. And you have the, one of the most unique years in the history of Student Senate Presidents, which you have to deal with, with doing projects and recruiting candidates and having an election virtually is a big challenge, and you've always been enthusiastic about it. We appreciate that on behalf of the board. Our next speaker is our college lobbyist, Dick Carter, joining us from Topeka, I assume.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'm having technical difficulties on the Zoom link, and so I'm calling in even though you may see a still shot of me on the screen, so thankfully you can hear me. My print report is fairly lengthy. My comments will focus more on the recent events of the week, and so will be a little bit more brief. We did just hit the first turnaround period, which concluded on March 5, and the preceding week was short since they took a couple days off. However, this week has had a flurry of activity as the legislature is in a much shorter time period to complete its work before the next deadline, which is April 9, and that's first adjournment. That means they go on break for pretty much the most, most of the month of April. The Budget Committee comes back towards the end of April to focus on issues to be addressed in the omnibus session. That ties up any loose ends on the budget, any pieces of legislation that, that didn't make it through in the regular part of the session can, can be ruled, to be worked on, and so that is what's going on right now. There's lots of double booking of committees, and we find ourselves sort of making sure we're covering all the, all the spots, not to miss anything. Moving into the budget, the Senate voted out its version of the budget earlier this week. It passed 24 to 10. That is not a veto-proof majority on, on the budget. The Senate version covers tiered and non-tiered cuts that were made to community colleges, but only includes about a half million for Senate Bill 155 restoration. That is an issue that will be dealt with in omnibus. It'll be covered in conference committees, but most likely will be talked about in the omnibus session. The House Appropriations Committee is still working on its budget. In fact, they're meeting right now and debating parts of the Tar Water, a new Tar Water amendment related to higher ed, and, and that is going on as we're meeting here. The House version of the community college sector has fully restored the Senate Bill 155 cut, both in the current year and in FY 2022, but did not fund the tiered and non-tiered cuts to the budget. So it's kind of a flip-flop between the House and the Senate, and both, both sides will have interesting positions when it comes to conferencing on the budget. As it relates to the Tar Water amendment that was made before legislators went on break regarding the clawbacks of tuition at state universities, either for remote courses or courses that weren't offered in full time, that amendment came off, the, the current amendment is a three-part amendment, and that was the first part of the amendment, was to remove that. They are currently debating on transferring money out of a K-12 budget to go to state universities for remedial education. That in and of itself is a very interesting conversation point since most of that work occurs at the community college level. That point was made to several legislators earlier this morning when the House Appropriations Committee was debating the, the budget and, and preparing for that Tar Water amendment. So we'll see what the outcome is of that as that committee still continues its work. Interestingly, the governor issued a comment on the Senate version of the budget as being devastating to K-12 education. That, that version of the budget, if it continues to move through, obviously it has to go through a conference committee process before it's sent to her. It, it won't fare well if it does make it to her in its current version. The legislature was working assiduously on the Kansas Emergency Management Act that expires on March 31. That also has an impact on the community college system. They approved their conference committee report this week, which has gone to the governor. It's our understanding that she will sign it. The enrolled version of the bill, which means what they approved, is, was just put up on the website about an hour ago, so we're just now beginning to go through it. It's one thing to listen to a, a budget explainer or a bill explainer. It's a completely different thing to go through and actually look at the actual language in a, in a bill. So we're working through that to see just exactly what the language, how it impacts community colleges during an emergency declaration. Our understanding is that after the emergency declaration goes away, the current one for COVID, that the law returns back to, to normal. I don't even know that I can explain that correctly. In fact, not very many people can, but that's what we're being told. That was part of the negotiated agreement. So that will be, that will be interesting to see what, how we are impacted in that, and that's what we're undertaking right now. The College Promise Act in the Senate died for turnaround purposes, but the College Promise Bill in the House was passed 115 to 9 and has a hearing in the Senate Education Committee this next Tuesday. We will present the same testimony for the third time indicating our support for such a program. A tax policy bill continued to move through the legislative process. I want to specifically reference and talk about Senate Bill 13, the Property Tax Transparency Bill. It's one that I've talked about at each meeting. This bill has passed with large majorities in both the House and the Senate and is on its way to the governor. It's unknown whether she will veto it or sign it or not sign it and allow it to become law. She has vetoed this bill or versions of it in prior sessions, but there are likely votes to override that veto this year. As you continue to develop and discuss budgets, I just want to reinforce that it's critical that you think about how it applies in a revenue-neutral situation, because that's the effect that this bill will have. And when the county sends us certified numbers, it will reflect the preceding year's budget. In order to capture any increase, you will have to increase the mill levy in a vote of the board. Everything else works the same way. When you do your budget workshops, when you do the budget hearings, everything's already noticed. We already hold hearings. Protests exist in the current format, but that will be, you can call it semantics if you want, but that will be a significant change in the way that we, that we do business as far as budgeting for the community college. There still is lots to be learned as that bill moves forward, as, as that process moves forward. It does not have practical effects until the 2022 budget year, or rather, 2022, when we'll be approving the 2023 budget. I just want to touch on a couple of other things. I know there's a number of bills that are listed in the, in the report, and if there's specific questions on those, I'm more than happy to answer those. But in other news, or in a lighter way to end the, the report, Ron Reichman Sr. was sworn in earlier this month to replace Senator Bud Estes, who passed away during the session. That is Ron Reichman Jr., the Speaker of the House's father, and at one point, you'll recall that they both served in the House of Representatives together. So both Reichmans are back in the building, one's in the House and one's in the Senate. And at the end of February, I spoke to the Johnson County Community College Foundation Board of Directors and gave them a brief snapshot of- Board of Directors and gave them a brief snapshot of legislative happenings in Topeka and had a nice exchange with members at that, at that event. So, Mr. Chair, I know there's likely to be questions. I'll stop there and preserve remaining time to, to address those.
Thank you, Dick. Questions for Dick Carter, trustee Cook?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Carter, regarding House Bill 2175, the Dwayne Peaslee Technical Training Center, what is the taxing jurisdiction that is being proposed?
That would be a .5 mill levy within the city of Florence, as I understand it. I don't believe it's a countywide tax, but I would have to look at it. That will require some matriculation to get it set up. They will have to go through a process of setting up that taxing district should that bill pass the legislature, be signed by the governor, and put into law.
I would ask you to pay attention to that, because a number of community colleges have partnerships with Peaslee in one form or another, and it wouldn't surprise me if that taxing district was extended to the community college in which students come from. So pay attention to that if you would. Thank you.
Other questions? Dick, I have a question on the Kansas Emergency Management Act. Your written report, and maybe it's changed when it was passed, provides that any person aggrieved by, I presume, any emergency action taken by a local government has the right to a hearing within 72 hours. Is that still in the bill?
Well, that was the way the original bill was, was presented, and in, on the Senate side, we amended, we were successful in amending that provision to allow for notice of a hearing by the governing body. And so you would not have had to help, you would not have had to have held the hearing within 72 hours. You would just simply have to notify the complainant that your hearing will be on X date within a certain number of days. That's what we're working on, trying to find out. That was a talking point during the conference committee process, and we've been told that that was preserved, but that's not how I read it in the bill explainer, and that's what we'll be combing through the enrolled version of the bill to find out. So I apologize that I don't have a clear answer, but that's all just coming to light right now.
So the legislative intent was to codify the rights of local governmental entities to make decisions, but any citizen within that area could then complain and get a public hearing? Is that my understanding?
If they felt aggrieved by that governing body, yes.
So if we, when we imposed the mask mandate on campus, anybody that was opposed to that could have demanded a public hearing, presumably now we could do it at the next board meeting instead of within 72 hours. I just want to point out the, the amount of mandates being placed on local government by the legislature and its wisdom, that it doesn't follow itself, including Senate Bill 13 on the property tax issue.
I was going to go there.
I don't think the legislature has ever, I know it has not reduced the 20-mill levy for K-12 since it was adopted in late 1990s, I think. And yet it has taken money from that, increased taxes every single year except during the Great Recession, including significant dollars out of Johnson County, which then are spent elsewhere. I have no problem spending my tax dollars on K-12 elsewhere in the state of Kansas, but for the legislature to act like we haven't been transparent, when for 20 years it has completely ignored any obligation to tell people, "We're now getting millions of dollars more because of assessed valuation statewide," and then tell us that we need to roll back the mill levy and then increase it, even if it's less than the year before, so if somebody can argue it's a tax increase, you might say it irritates me a bit. It's so disingenuous and inconsistent that it's irritating. Trustee Cross.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair, and I dare say we might concur on this issue, because it seems to me it would be a tax increase. You stole my softball there. Because if they're going to require us to do something and add cost to a measure, it seems to me that's a tax increase, and I haven't met too many of our legislators that like tax increases. So if they want to have a tax increase, I suppose they could have a tax increase, but to me that would be a tax increase. Is that, is that, do I understand your?
When the mill levy stays the same and assessed valuation goes up, we get more money, and the state gets more money. And that's how it's happened. And every year in our budget book, we show how much new money we're getting on the same levy, and we've rolled it back sometimes, and we've increased it, at least once when I've been on the board. It's all been laid out for the public. The legislature has taken in millions and millions of new dollars with its 20 mills as the whole state's property valuation goes up, and it's never said a word about it, never expressly adjudicated that in a public hearing. And so it's, it's a solution in search of a problem, and we have more, or bigger fish to fry at the state level than that. So that's all, that's my soapbox for tonight. Trustee Lawson?
Nancy, trustee Ingram can go first.
Okay, trustee Ingram.
Okay, well, thank you. Mr. Carter, could we go back real briefly to the Peaslee bill? Because as I understood when we had our quarterly meeting of KCCT earlier this month, that the possible outcome of this action could also lead to Peaslee becoming a technical college? Correct?
That would have, that, that could be correct. It would be pretty far down the line, and it would have to go through a process at the Board of Regents. So there would be some additional steps to go through, but that has always been our concern from the get-go. So your assessment is correct. It would not, it would not simply just appear, it would require quite a few steps, but yes.
Right, and that therefore could set a precedent for other entities who would desire their own taxing authority?
They would have to continue to go back to their county. I'm not sure how their, I don't, I'm not sure how their board would be set up, but they would have to go back to their county for any increase in their mill levy. And right now it's capped at, at a half a mill.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Trustee Lawson?
Thank you. Great question, trustee Ingram. So, Dick, I have a couple of questions, two different topics. So I know last week, our Attorney General Schmidt joined with some other AGs suggesting that the state should sue over COVID funds in the new American Rescue Plan, or return the funds to the government if we can't use them for tax cuts. So I just wanted to kind of know if Kansas refuses this money, how does this impact the budget? And has Kansas already spent this money?
Well, Kansas hasn't spent the upcoming round yet. There are a number of legislative bills in play that seek to capture some of that money and send it to different places for oversight or dispersment, if you will. The, the other piece that you raised is one that, that many people are following and watching, and that is the, the tax reduction piece. For those that receive the money, you're not allowed to reduce or, or lower taxes as a result of taking those dollars. And so for the community college sector, I think that that amount, my papers are shuffled now, is in the neighborhood of 212 million. And to put that in perspective, and of course it's right there on, on the front page of the report, community colleges as a collective group receive about 175 million from the state annually. So your, your observation is accurate and one that we are also watching as far as how that, how that lawsuit plays out at the federal level.
Okay, thank you. And of course, the, the latest one that just passed very late last night was the Senate Bill 208. I know I've got grave concerns about the young girls and young boys in our high schools as this potentially could roll out. I know we might not have the override votes, so that's, you know, something that might be able to stop that, but if there's a way to, talk about our JCC lobby position on this legislation?
I would, I would look to the chair or to Dr. Bound. We are following that bill and tracking that. Like you said, it passed 24 to 10 last night, which is not a veto override-proof majority. It also still has to go to the House where it may or may not get a, receive a hearing, and should it make it through that process, it would still be up for review by the, the governor. I would just say that no institute, either, no individual institution, no associations or entities of higher ed participated in, in commenting on that, that bill. It is anticipated that should, should it move forward or should things continue, that the NCAA would likely weigh in, and then the JCAA would hopefully follow suit.
And just for the public who's watching, the Senate Bill 208 was asking high schools to conduct a genitalia check on students participating in sports, to log them. So as you can imagine, the risk of putting our young high schoolers in a position of not knowing who is going to be doing those checks can, of course, risk who would want to move to Kansas. But it also, the NCAA has already told states that they are not going to come to states that, that enforce this. And Idaho, Idaho is the one state that has already had, has already passed this legislation. So it's going to cost, cost us a very high price tag if this goes through. So, thank you, Dick.
Dick, I'm sure you'll keep an eye on that legislation along with the other ones for us.
Yes, sir.
I don't see other questions, so thank you for your time. Enjoy your evening. We'll move on to the Faculty Association President, Dr. Jim Leicher.
Good evening.
Evening, Jim.
I have a few items to mention, but first I want to thank the FA Vice President Diane Neighbors, who stands in for me in that conference. With the kind of articulation one affects from an English professor, Diane truly gets the second-best award award of anyone I know. Mostly, I'm here to share good news. As you may know, Laura Harris-Gaston, Professor of Fine Arts, has been accepted as a Fulbright student of the college. This makes JCC the only institution of higher ed in Kansas with a faculty member who has received this honor for the current academic year. Laura's plans to study ceramics here in India were put on hold during the pandemic. We learned recently that the folks at Fulbright extended that opportunity in 2022, so she'll be taking her skills to West Bengal for five months in tandem with her doctoral. I report this with a little envy being of the Fulbright A's recipient a few years back, who's nowhere near as good as a Fulbright research scholar. But I do know that achieving something like this takes a lot of work, usually after several failed application attempts. And it requires the strong support of an international study office, which we have and had have the last few years under Tom Patterson. Tom will be retiring soon. The college should recognize him and the terrific work that he, Matt Jackson, and others have done, and I hope finding a work that's tougher for Tom will be a priority. As Greg will report later, earlier this week, the Collegial Steering Committee left to review the DEI exception by NCC consulting. Most of our conversations concerned how diversity initiatives might well went into existing college programs. We did kick around some ideas about improving student retention, how to attract more diverse pools of applicants, more active citizens, and so forth. I wouldn't say we could land it on any college answers, but like most things in Collegial Steering, I think we all left a better understanding of the challenges faced at different levels. There will be more opportunity to, there will be more things to say about, but that's what we're keeping planning, Mr. Quaid and Denver, if we should talk more about specific things. This morning, of course, formal contract negotiations began after two days of both the FA and more teams going through training and ID data, and there's based arguments. For our part, we're generally pleased with the process, and we've seen nothing that undermines our agenda to ID data. I hope you'll get a similar comparison of that later in our 90-minute executive session. And that's the extent of my contribution on that subject. Last Tuesday marked my, several faculty, including myself, attended a DNEA higher education college. FA leadership frequently meets with local presidents and representatives from our K-12 partners. But increasingly the last few years, thanks in part to some of our folks like Deb Williams and Brett Cooper, there have been more opportunities to network with faculty from other campus community college and university. This particular meeting even included reports from our Nebraska affiliates describing how return campus plans are working there. All of us who attended found this very useful. As I've listened to your board meetings these last few months, I've been struck by the way groups like the KAPT facilitate dialogue between trustees from around the state on mutual issues. It's pleasing to see our union moving in a similar direction. I, I think in the future, my reports and my successes should be better informed by having a perspective of what's going on statewide with topics of concern to us academia. Lastly, as of a couple of days ago, I was preparing a very different kind of report for tonight. I've heard from several colleagues, some formally, some casually through social media, questioning the pace of vaccination in Johnson County, particularly the decision not to include higher education under the same classification as K-12. Some have reached out directly to local health authorities, wondering how other counties like Windup, Ottawa, or any of the state's located, have justified that move while Johnson County passed. Therefore, I was pleased to learn yesterday that plans are afoot for JCC employees to receive vaccinations soon. I guess we're all eager to know the details of how that's going to be implemented. In light of plans to reopen offices on April 5th, I certainly hope speed is part of the equation, and that the safety of people who are required to be on campus, particularly those who have already been here for months without vaccinations, will take precedent. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much, Jim, and I don't need to give my collegial steering report now. I, I think you covered it, you covered it very well. Questions for Dr. Leicher? You scared everybody off by mentioning the second time we have a 90-minute executive session, Jim. Trustee Smith Everett?
I guess my question's actually for Dr. Bound. Will we be, continue to be apprised of the vaccination plan?
Yes, yes. Yeah, absolutely. At this point, we've just been informed that we're included, and we don't really know much of anything beyond that. And so as we are, as we become aware of what the plan is, and we work together with the folks at Johnson County Department of Health and Environment and others to develop the implementation plan, we will certainly keep you attuned to what's going on.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you again, Jim. Next, we'll move to the Johnson County Education Research Triangle. Trustee Cross is our liaison to that. August Body?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, the board has not met. J-Cert will meet on Monday, April 19th, at K-State Latha. Our revenues for this past month were down slightly, about 1%, which is really not too bad compared to this time last year. So that really concludes my report, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Don't see any questions. We'll move on to the Kansas Association of Community College Trustees. Trustee Ingram, president of that body.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We did have our quarterly meeting on Saturday, March 6th, so that has been 12 days ago. Mr. Carter did a really nice job of bringing us up to date with the legislative report that he has given, but we did spend a lot of time on Senate bills, House bills, a lot of legislative updates that I'm going to still highlight a couple of those things, but he, much like you in collegial steering, he covered a great deal of our meeting. We did discuss the Phi Theta Kappa ceremony, and I appreciate President Bound bringing that to everyone's attention as well. If you'll remember, this is something that we typically hold in Topeka, so the association will be discussing how we will move forward with that. We have 19 schools across the state. You know, hopefully everyone will be interested in getting back together for that next March. We also talked about the presidents' meetings, which I have elaborated on throughout this year, and how important those have become to the colleges across the state. And it's just that transfer information, it's everyone being communicated to at the same time, discussing all the different opportunities that have come across our schools for funding CARES Act COVID-related expenses. So we do spend a lot of time every Friday on that, and those have been really appreciated, and we will continue to do that, it sounds like, just in terms of beyond COVID. Everyone has really appreciated that opportunity. Mike Johnson, who is from Barton Community College, he is a trustee who serves as our KCC representative on the K C C T representative on the Technical Associate, Technical Education Authority, which is T E A, gave a report on the role of this group, which is to oversee the technical programs of the 19 community colleges as well as our six technical schools in Kansas. He explained that this organization was established in 2007 by the Kansas Legislature and functions under the auspices of K BOR. So that was a really good report. Arlen Leicher from Colby Community College reported on the recent A C C T National Leadership Summit. He noted that there was a huge list of higher education priorities that were developed to present to the federal government and, and talked about the importance of, of moving forward with those priorities. He also sought input as to the possibility of restoring regional meetings. This was a practice in the past. We are part of the Western Region of K, of A C C T, and members were discussing whether we would like to resume those meetings if restored. Those meetings will be conducted virtually. So we'll be having that conversation as we move forward as well. Dennis Riddle, who is president of Cali Community College, updated the group on K BOR's push for community colleges to address the issues of diversity, equity, and inclusion on their campuses. He noted their focus is on whether or not support is being given by the community colleges to those underserved groups, especially those not succeeding at the rate, same rate as their peers. Dr. Riddle reported the study has become the focus of the Council of Presidents. I would add to the report a couple of things legislatively that were discussed, and maybe not even so much legislatively. Heather reminded the group that the federal COVID-19 funds are one-time in nature and not intended to support, and not intended to support normal or ongoing operational expenses of a college. And I think there's just, you know, clarification that continues to be necessary to remind us all of what those funds are really there for. And I know Dr. Bound and administration are fully in tune with that, but it's just good for the trustees to have that explanation as well. You also received in the packet that you should have received regarding our meeting, there was a recent document entitled Kansas Blueprint for Economic Growth. This was from Kansas Governor Kelly. Heather first noted that there had not been anything of this nature since 1980. She further noted that while the plan hosts numerous proposals, currently there is no money in the state budget to fund those proposals. A major focus of this document is the recognition that while the state colleges are doing an excellent job in preparing individuals for a wide variety of careers, far too many of them are leaving the state for other employment outside of Kansas. Heather noted that the current state legislative body is not pleased with this action because state monies are being spent on individuals who then take their skills and knowledge out of the state. And she did specifically ask that we bring that back to our boards, just as a reminder of, of really where we are at this particular point. Legislatively, as I mentioned, Dick really covered all of that. I would just note that we also had Dan Murray, who is our K C C T lobbyist, come and speak to us. We typically have Dan following the legislative session, but there was a request to go ahead and have him. We employ him during the legislative session to provide an update. So again, he provided a lot of information that we've heard repeated before. I will tell you, and I usually announce that the executive team meets once a month. We will be discussing in our major piece of information that we'll be reviewing this coming week is the evaluation of our executive director. Heather is completing her second year. We evaluated her last year. That evaluation was done with the college liaison and the president. So I anticipate that we'll do that same thing. But we do evaluate her and her work on a yearly basis. So I'm happy to entertain any questions. Otherwise, that concludes my report.
Questions? Trustee Smith Everett.
I'd actually, I'd like to make a comment, not a question. But I, when we got our lobbyist report, I was going to bring this up and then thought I wouldn't. And then you just spoke about the ongoing issue with young Kansans leaving the state. And I just want to say, it is as much the community college's responsibility as it is legislators who continue to defund our school systems and make young Kansans see Kansas as a very unattractive place to stay and raise their families. And it is all of our jobs to change that. But this constant refrain of the legislature being upset that we're funding and supporting young Kansans and they choose to go somewhere else is not a problem of the institutions doing that. It's a larger global problem that many stakeholders need to take ownership for. And I just want to say that independent of this board, that we can't keep throwing our hands up when we continue to make decisions that make other places look much more attractive to young Kansans.
Thank you. I know some others participated in the K C C T quarterly meeting, or did we? Did you want to make any comments? Trustee Cook?
I don't have to.
No, and I'm, I'm sorry, because I should have, I should have added that.
I think that Trustee Ingram covered that very, very well. I would just say, now that you've asked, as a follow-up to Trustee Smith Everett, and I concur with her remarks, if in fact our young people are leaving the state to be employed elsewhere, I believe that's a testimony to the quality of education our K through 12 in our higher ed programs are having, if our, if our young people are highly competitive around the nation. And so I agree with you. I think it's a, it's a state initiative to take the right action to make sure there's employment opportunities in trending careers to encourage people to stay here. But it was a well, really well said meeting. I did make a remark that on the regional, the chat, and we've discussed that at A C C T many times. And I, and I think I indicated that the key to an effective regional meeting, just like A C C T, is the content. And when you look at our region, which goes from Texas to North Dakota, I don't believe North Dakota is engaged any longer. I think they dropped out. Oklahoma is no longer engaged. South Dakota is comprised of Indian Nation schools. And I think unless they joined as tribal nations, I'm not sure they're active anymore. Montana has a few. Nebraska has a handful. Wyoming has a handful. And Texas has probably, what, Dr. Bound, 27 to 30 community colleges. So I, I think the region, if you're looking at a geographical location to meet, could very likely end up someplace in Texas. And so again, I think content and geographic travel to get more trustees to attend would be critical. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Lawson.
Well, well said, everybody. I think you, that's exactly what I was thinking, Dr. Cook, the businesses. Once they, everybody graduates with quality education and a quality degree, where are the businesses meeting those salary ranges? And if they're not meeting the salary ranges, and that's, then they're going to go elsewhere. So I'm looking at the business community and saying, it's your turn, you know, tag your it. Let's, let's meet up with the education that we're providing. We're doing our share, and you need to meet us and meet our students at where they are and pay them for the rates that they are owed.
All right. Thank you. The last item on the reports is our foundation report from Trustee Snyder.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The foundation recently completed and began distributing the 2020 Summit Opportunity Commander book. You all should have received one in the mail along with foundation members and supporters. Mine was unfortunately folded in half to fit in my mailbox. So hopefully everyone else got a nice, clean, flat copy. Tremendous mailer. It went out to nearly 300 people. Additional 200 copies were, were distributed to other groups on an ongoing basis. And then over 3,000 people were also invited to download a digital version of that. The foundation would like to thank the college's strategic communications and marketing team for the, the wonderful collaboration and the, the output of that being a wonderful book that highlighted so many great stories about the college last year. The foundation member social was, was held Thursday, February 25th. It was a Zoom meeting and featured, as Mr. Carter mentioned, both Dick and Kate Allen, and was an interactive discussion on college issues in Topeka and branched out beyond just college issues. So it was a good opportunity for everyone that, that joined that. The executive committee will meet next Tuesday, March 23rd, and the next foundation board meeting is Wednesday, October 25th. The foundation would like to recognize Joanne Konekney, who is retiring from her position as the foundation accountant at the end of the month. She's been in this role for nearly 15 years and has been instrumental in the financial health and success of the foundation during this time. Joanne is committed at all times to the proper stewardship, reporting and monitor of donor funds, resulting in the foundation continuously receiving clean external audits on an annual basis for more than a decade. So thank you to Joanne for her years of service to the community college and the foundation. We wish her well and a happy retirement at the end of the month. And we're also excited to report that Susan Black, currently an accountant with the college's Financial Services Branch, will be assuming this important role with the foundation and carrying on Joanne's tremendous legacy. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Trustee Snyder. Questions on the foundation? If not, we'll move into the committee reports. Collegial steering, as Dr. Leicher mentioned, we spent the entire hour reviewing the D E I assessment report and kicking around both some history on the campus and things that we are doing now and how we're going to feed that into our strategic plan. My comments were comparable to what I've talked about before. D E I is a tough subject. It's a process. It has to be embedded at all levels. It will happen too quickly for some and too slow for others. But we're on the road. And we, as a board, know that trustee, that we've included as a part of Dr. Bound's objectives, two out of five of his objectives are really very directly related to diversity, equity, inclusion, belonging, access and equity, or equitable outcomes. So it was a good discussion, and I think the faculty, the cabinet, and myself on behalf of the board indicated our commitment to it. So. Management committee, Trustee Cook.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Question on collegial steering. I appreciate that the attention was given to D E I, and that is a very, very significant and important issue to resolve. And I know that I'm probably out of order when I say this, but I, I did want to make a comment, and I'm disappointed that in collegial steering, the issue of testing did not. And I, I guess I'm coming from the premise that if we do something, we should finish strong. And I thought the two presentations tonight by our faculty members, Ms. Edmonds and Mr. Krug, were reasonable requests in that we need a testing service that can honor our students with an effective testing program at the end of coursework in a timely fashion. I believe we have a very talented faculty. We have a very talented group of administrators. But I have to say that I am disappointed that we sit here in March when this topic has been on the table since either last spring or at least summer, maybe earlier. And when the request is, we need to have some kind of a testing service. And I, I know I'm out of line because it's none of my business in the details. But I am frustrated that this continues to be a topic of discussion. We have two clients, I think as a college. We have a group of faculty that has designed a coursework, and we have a group of students that want to be tested efficiently and effectively to carry on their future. So my, my request is that I hope the plea is heard. And I haven't given Dr. Bound and the administrators a, a chance to hear their side of the story. I don't need to do that tonight. But if, if the request is, can we meet more frequently than once a month? And we have some deadlines coming up, I'm, I'm expecting that that will get some attention. That's all I will say about that. But I am disappointed that we continue to hear this topic.
But I'll tell you why it wasn't addressed at a collegial steering, because it is already being addressed through processes that are part of the shared governance with people at the table. And my understanding is, there's been trouble, there's been trouble getting people to the table just from scheduling perspectives. So I am, I am confident that Dr. Bound still believes that's a priority, and that if everybody believes it's a priority, it will get, it will get handled. I know there are individual faculty members that are frustrated with it. What I would encourage them to do is to work within the bounds of the shared governance structure that came from the bottom up and that we talked about. And I, I will never discourage anybody from talking to this board, but to come to this board and say, we want to get a whole bunch of people together, of faculty that are interested, and senior, senior management, outside of the structure we've established, I'm not prepared to do that because I don't think we've, I don't think we've exhausted the current process.
Well, I appreciate that. And again, I don't know both sides of the story, and I'm, I'm out of line. But then if there is a process in place, I think the request is, could they expedite their findings for the benefit of students?
Right. I agree. Trustee Cross.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I share the trustee's concern, and I appreciate his voice here. Again, I don't know the full side of it, but for Jerry Cook to beat me to an issue is a rare day, and I thank him for his leadership. And, you know, I don't know that I agree with the testing service, just to let you know that I don't, you know, let him escape from some criticism with his comments. But I think more full-time hires could be a solution. I think there are solutions available. I would welcome a testing service if it is a better solution. But frankly, one of the problems I have with this administration and the previous one was that decisions are made at a low, mid-level, and then they are just simply followed all the way up because nobody at the top knows anything different what's being handed to them. Now, I'm not directly criticizing Dr. Bound yet. I think during COVID, again, as I've expressed to faculty, individual faculty members that bring this to me, that, you know, we are during COVID and that the administration, both the previous and this one, get a lot of latitude. But I share in Trustee Cook's concerns here. I'm tired of hearing about it. That's not directed at Dr. Bound. I'm not sure it's fair to Dr. Bound because he's subject to the information being handed to him. But time and again, I've seen this administration at low and mid-levels make a decision, and everybody ham-handedly makes a decision, then stands by it, and everybody all the way up stands by it. And I, you know, these are fair and reasonable people. These are not reactionary professors bringing us this information. And I sure would appreciate your attention to this, Dr. Bound.
Would you like to respond to that in any way?
I would be happy to. And I may also incorporate Dr. McLeod as well. But certainly, I've heard loud and clear the frustration of faculty. And I think what I would say is, in a self-governance structure, a shared governance structure, the pace at which we meet is determined by the team. And so this is my direct challenge to the team. This includes both our faculty as well as our team in the testing center, that for both of you, we need to pick up the pace. When, when this continues to come to the board, the frustration that's there. And so, professors, Edmonds and Krug, you've been heard loud and clear this evening, as others have heard before. But I would say, in order to work through this, it takes everybody being willing to be at the table at a pace to make it happen. And so this is directed to everyone involved in this process. You got to pick it up. You just got to pick it up. We got to get this done for the sake of our students ultimately, but also to bring clarity. I will challenge us to think about, and I've challenged the group to think about this, is of all the student success initiatives that we have in front of us, is increasing staffing related to testing what's going to drive student success? We have issues we have to work through from, from a, a test management, a test proctoring standpoint. But whether that's in the classroom or whether that's done online, we've got to work through this. And so I hear you loud and clear. And so I expect the pace to pick up, but I'm looking to the teams that are working on this. Some who, at least as I have, it's been described to me, more willing to clear schedules to make it happen. That's what it's going to take, folks. And so if we believe in shared governance, we got to let it work. We just got to pick up the pace. Dr. McLeod?
To, to kind of second the, the comments by Dr. Bound, I think that, I've been here four years. I've heard multiple times about how important process is to the people at Johnson County, in particular to our professorial. In building shared governance, the process is paramount. The process is not always fast. It is not always as efficient as everyone would like it to be. But it is designed to reach the best answer for the most people, be they dealing with student issues, faculty issues, staff issues. And so the patience with which we work through these issues to make sure that all folks come to the table and have an opportunity to be a part of this conversation is absolutely paramount. To, to speak to Trustee Cross's assertion that there have kind of been ham-handed attempts to simply let middle management make decisions, I would, I would challenge that assertion with the idea that the decisions made by the administration of this college are studied, they are thoughtful, and often it is not from middle management. In fact, In fact, the decisions to make some of the changes that are being discussed and have been discussed almost ad nauseam over the last eight months were brought into effect by over a year's worth of work by faculty, by staff, by administrators. Shared responsibility for an outcome with which the administration has shared its authority with those who are workers at this institution to attempt to bring about the best possible ending and best solution for all students. That it does not meet the standard of a group is hard to deal with, but it is a reality. You as trustees act in a world where you as, as political actors recognize that not all answers are palatable to all people. We live in a country of dissent, a place where multiple voices need to be heard. I applaud the faculty members who came forward tonight to bring their concerns, but they are concerns that are not universally shared. And I speak not necessarily for, for the institution, but I will speak for myself. As a practitioner, as a teacher, as an educator, the belief that all of the effort that has been expended to find the best possible ways to provide flexibility, appropriate testing and appropriate proctoring can't be thrown aside with simple assertions. I heard the words, logical fallacy, that, that everyone, everyone cheats. I would also argue that it's a logical fallacy that with all the technology that we possess today, that we cannot find a suitable approach to meet the needs of proctoring our students that can work with the teaching designations and the system that have been put in place by the committees and the groups that have worked on this for a very long time as we work through our process. I continue to believe we can get there. I continue to believe we can get there together. And I continue to believe that in the end, the ultimate goal of serving these students in the best way possible is the end goal of everyone who has invested in this work at Johnson County.
Thank you. Dr. McLeod, thank you again. Just reiterate, we've got to pick up the pace.
Trustee Smith Everett.
I would like to request to, as the board, just to be kept abreast of it and in a regular ongoing way. I think that helps from us being, when we're blindsided by people frustrated, reaching out. I don't feel informed. And I think, as everyone has said tonight, we need a resolution that's good for all people. And at this point, I don't even know where we are in the process. And so maybe the committee as a whole is a better place for it, but somewhere to be informed regularly until we have a resolution.
Done.
Other comments? Trustee Lawson.
I feel like this is a little bit of a double-edged sword because I definitely hear what Dr. McLeod has been saying here. Because in years prior, there has been the complaint that leadership has taken too much of a lead in making decisions. And now I see within the last year, this real movement for shared governance to allow DEI, the inclusive voices to have their say, does require more time. So I appreciate the faculty coming forward and giving us the feedback that lets us know there's some fine tuning that needs to happen. And some of that could just be picking up the pace. So I appreciate that, Dr. Bound. But there's also, when you make those statements in the public side, you're also encouraging administration to go faster. So there's just this double-edged sword about inclusivity and needing to make a decision to move forward. So I just want to make sure everyone's aware of what that looks like.
I appreciate everybody's comments. I think Dr. Weber would like to say something. Do you want to give him the chance? Dr. Weber?
Yeah, thanks. I just, I guess I'd like to because of a request about speaking to process here. The, the testing issue is, is obviously complex. You've heard about it for a while. And the testing center is a cog in the complexity, but it's not going to be the single solution. We have been meeting on this. We've had teams meeting on this, on testing as a solution for a long time. So to provide some context on it, just because I do feel like, I do feel like we don't always hear all sides. There was a task force charged over two years ago to look at the lines in the testing center and the ability to provide service to users, both students and faculty. That task force did immense work and then we really were able to improve the experience, particularly for students. We knew that there were some continued challenges with faculty. We had some efforts to try to improve those for their experience. And then COVID hit and some of those processes that are using the center for face-to-face classes have been slowed a bit. But on this issue in particular, it has to do with academic course testing. One of the things worth noting is that our testing center itself, when it was created, was never designed as an academic testing center. It was designed to do placement testing. It was designed to do ADA-type testing, PLA testing. And then as online courses came around, we started to have more academic testing in there. It was a great service to be able to provide to students and faculty. But as our online courses grew, we started to realize capacity was an issue. We also saw a number of instances where we had inconsistencies with those who were using it and how they were doing it. That's why the original task force couldn't play. But when we went ahead and changed course delivery types to online hybrid, online hybrid and face-to-face, then it also impacted how courses were taken by students. So this issue is a little more complex because you have online courses by definition that are to be strictly online. And then you have hybrid, which are to allow course testing or proctoring on campus, whether it's if given in the testing center or by the instructor. A lot to unfold there. And so a task force was, was set up to say, how can we use our testing center to best support academic testing, the resources we have? What I will tell you is, the work of this team will still not meet the needs and desires of all. I, I, I will meet more, hopefully, but it will not meet all. I can tell you that, that's what it'll end up being at the end of the day. But, but this, this has been meeting for months. We have had a number of folks and the task force members change as a large committee. So we hear that move forward with it and, and we'll take that to heart. But this is, this is the example, and I'll just echo what, what Dr. McLeod and Dr. Bound said. This is what's happening with the growing pains of shared governance. I'll probably leave it there.
Thank you. I think this is, this is an important topic. It wasn't part of the agenda, but it was, it was important and worth talking about. And certainly our two speakers spoke to it at the start of the meeting. I think my point would be, after a lot of years of looking at process and policies, process will not satisfy everybody and it will not eliminate disagreement. And there will still be people speaking one way or the other at, at open comment periods. And I think what we owe this process is to allow it to play out with some acceleration, with some attention to it. But it is a process that I don't think is unique to Johnson County Community College because everybody who had to go to online is now trying to figure out how to test their students in a way that's not only credible academically, but allows the, allows safety to do it. And so we're, we're working through those things. And I'm confident that with this focus on it, we will, we will end up with a conclusion. I'm not going to say solution because some people will not see it as a solution. We will end up with a conclusion that is the best that good minds can bring together on campus. So if that's all on that topic, let's move to the management committee, trustee Cook.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. What a great opportunity for Johnson County Community College to establish a regional, national model for testing academic courses taught online. Thank you. The management committee did meet on March 3rd, 8:00 AM via Zoom. Trustees Snyder and Smith Everett were in attendance, along with a large group of faculty and staff. We have a number of recommendations, but before I get to those, you can see the reports in your packet. Janelle Vogler, Associate Vice President of Business Services, presented the single-source purchase report of bids between $50,000 and $150,000. Those are found on pages six and seven of your report. Tom Hall, Associate Vice President of Campus Services, gave the monthly update on capital infrastructure projects. This report is on page 11 of the packet. Into the recommendation piece that you have in your packet tonight, Rachel Leers, Associate Vice President of Financial Services, presented the current capital outlay levy challenge. As you know, Kansas Statute 71501 authorizes community colleges to levy up to two mils for the purpose of construction, reconstruction, repair, remodeling, additions to furnishing and equipping of college buildings, architectural expenses, et cetera, et cetera, for the purpose of keeping your buildings up to date. And for years, our college has approved a half-mil levy every five years for the last several years. That levy expires on June 30th, 2021. Pages one and two of your packet will give you the detail of the, of the statute. Publication dates are charged tonight as to approve a resolution, which once approved, then would be printed in our, our official papers on March 22nd, March 29th, April 5th. And then there is a period in April to June where people can respond to that levy request. We would then vote on approving that levy, which would take effect July 1, 2021, for the next five-year period. There's no magic to why our buildings and grounds are such in great shape. We rely on this half-mil levy to ensure that we have funds to keep our, our facilities up to date. And the need, I think, now is also supported by the fact that we have voted to update our science labs and some of this money certainly will be used for that. So it is the recommendation of the management committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to adopt the resolution authorizing that the current capital outlay tax levy of one-half mil shall be renewed for a period of five years, beginning on July 1st, 2021, as found in your packet.
So moved.
Been moved by trustee Cook and seconded by trustee Lawson. Rachel Leers is prepared to give a short presentation if anybody has any questions. This is a, will be a renewing of a mil levy, one-half mil that has been in place since I've been on the board for the capital outlay fund. So if anybody has any questions, we can go to Rachel or otherwise, is there any discussion about this?
Resolution, by the way, is found on page 2A of your packet. So if that, once we approve this tonight, that will be the resolution published, as I indicated.
Okay. If not, no discussion. All those in favor of the recommendation signify by saying yes.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I was, I've gone back to my yes. And then all those opposed say no. That passes unanimously, 7-0.
If you'll go to page four of your packet for the backup information, we have a, a recommendation to approve the Microsoft software subscription. This is a renewal of our current program. It is the recommendation of the management committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the CDW quote for the college's annual Microsoft renewal for a total estimated amount of $524,499.94. And I'll make that recommendation.
Second.
Moved by trustee Cook and seconded by trustee Cross to accept the recommendation of the annual renewal for CDW, the Microsoft licensing. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Opposed, no. Motion carries 7-0.
The next recommendation is for a single-source purchase with Wilson Group for renovation services to OCB 369. And again, that, that detail can be found on page four. It is the recommendation of the management committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the quote from the Wilson Group for Reconstruction Renovation Services to OCB 369 in the amount of $310,853.64 with an additional 10% contingency of $31,085.96 to allow for possible unforeseen costs for a total estimated expenditure of $341,939. And I'll make that motion.
Second.
Moved by trustee Cook and I heard a second from trustee Lawson to accept the bid for the renovation of OCB 369 to go to the Wilson Group. Any discussion?
I oppose the 96 cents.
Yeah. There's some interesting bids here where we're cutting them very fine. So all those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
And additional recommendation.
Motion carries unanimously.
An additional recommendation to the Wilson Group for renovation services to MTC 221 and 223, and that detail is found on page five of your packet. It is the recommendation of the management committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the quote from the Wilson Group for Construction Renovation Services to MTC 221 and 223 in the amount of $227,834.73 with an additional 10% contingency of $22,783.47 to allow for possible unforeseen costs for a total estimated expenditure of $250,618.20. And I'll make that motion.
Second.
Moved by trustee Cook and seconded by trustee Smith Everett to accept the, the bid for the Wilson Group on MTC 221 and 223. Questions or discussion?
Just a statement. I mean, these contingencies are very fair considering the prices that are continuing to go up. So I'm just grateful for the Wilson Group and, and having those prices considering this climate right now. So thank you.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. That motion carries unanimously.
If I haven't skipped one, our next one is for the Wiley Hospitality Culinary Academy for the barbecue pavilion. The funds for this project, by the way, come through the foundation on a, on a contribution that was made some years ago to update our pavilion, our outdoor barbecue training facility. And so it is the recommendation of the management committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the low bid with alternate for the shade accessory from KBS Contractors, Inc., for a request for bid RFB 21-033 Wiley Hospitality and Culinary Academy, WHCA, barbecue pavilion in the amount of $189,672 with an additional 10% contingency of $18,967.20 to allow for possible unforeseen costs for a total estimated expenditure of $208,639.20. And I'll make that recommendation.
Second.
Moved by trustee Cook and seconded by trustee Smith Everett to accept the bid for KBS Construction on the Wiley Pavilion. Questions or discussion? Trustee Smith Everett.
I apologize, but I must make a comment. And if this was part of the original design when the culinary building was put in, certain faculty who are retired have reached out to me to ask how we could get such a thing now. And they are very pleased because Ken City being the barbecue capital of the nation, we must have such a place to show off and to train our students. So thank you so much to the foundation for this and our partners that are working with this to help realize a dream by some who are no longer here.
Well said.
Thank you, Dan.
I don't know what you're seeking of.
Mr. Chair, I know the foundation has reached out and given the Wiley Foundation a thanks, but to answer your question, trustee Smith Everett, the, the gift from the Wiley Foundation certainly helped make this possible and we're very appreciative to them for this great gift.
Thank you.
All right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously.
I want you to all control your emotions on this next one. But the final recommendation is for the campus wayfinding signage project. We've had this discussion for some time on updating our signage as we have added some new facilities, new buildings. And of course, one of the challenges our students have is where do I go to get to this building or that building? And Mr. Hall has brought forward in our management committee meeting, the discussion regarding signage. And it was great delight that it is the recommendation of the management committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the low bid from Midwest Sign Company for a request for bid RFB 21-036, JCC Campus Wayfinding Signage in the amount of $356,399.57 with an additional 10% contingency of $35,639.96 to allow for possible unforeseen costs for a total estimated expenditure of And I'll make that recommendation.
Second.
Moved by trustee Cook and seconded by trustee Ingram to accept the bid for Midwest Sign Company on the wayfinding on campus. Questions or discussion? Trustee Cross.
Good discussion, yes, Mr. Chair. I thank the administration and I know the previous administration had, had got the ball rolling on this. And as a matter of my memory, I think somebody could correct me, the, the comments and discussions of signs over the years have been frankly a point of personal privilege and humor from trustee Dave Lindstrom to, I believe, trustee Henry Sandate making some biting comments about the lack of wayfinding that we had compared to how his children had it at K-State. So I appreciate the administration's attention to this. And really, over the years of various social events, signage here is, I always thought was good, but I, you know, appreciate the different perspectives. So I thank the administration for this and I'll be quiet now. So thank you.
I really.
I wanted to second that motion, particularly because I have 22 pictures in my phone of the signage when I first started as a trustee, thinking, how the heck is this allowed to happen here? So, we all have chatted about this, it's a joyous evening, so, thank you.
It was part of the master facilities plan-
I know.
-that we studied for several years.
I know.
And part of it was, when we get the buildings built, we have to figure out a better process for signage, so people can find them.
Right.
And so this is the culmination of something, so-
And we want a sign that leads to the barbecue pavilion.
Yes, big, big sign.
You do not need signs to lead to the barbecue, you have your-
I hope your dad is listening.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously.
Tom Hall, I know you're listening, and I don't need to say how high the expectations are for this project to be successful. Sleep well tonight, my friend.
That concludes our report. I'll defer to Trustee Snyder or Trustee Smith Everett for additional comments.
Nothing from me.
I would just say that signage has been an issue for a very long time, and it's lovely to be resolved, and I've only been here a year, and it's been-
I'm going to predict 100% attendance at the groundbreaking or the ribbon-cutting of the barbecue pavilion, is just a guess. All right, we'll move on to the Treasurer's Report. Under President's Recommendations for Action, to our Treasurer, Trustee Cross.
Stand by for action. The Treasurer's Report can be found in your Board Packet and includes the Treasurer's Report for the month ended January 31st, 2021. Some items of note include, on page one, the General Post Secondary Technical Education Fund summary. January was the seventh month of the college's 2021 fiscal year. An ad valorem tax distribution of $59,926,508 was received from Johnson County in January and recorded as follows, colon, "to the general fund, $56.4 million. Special Assessment Fund had $221,586, and the Capital Outlay Fund had $3.291 million, for a total of the aforementioned $59,926,508." The spring disbursement of the college's 2021 state operating grant was also received in January in the amount of $11.1 million, and we thank the state for that, that's awesome. Thank you, state. It could be higher, but thank you for that. The college's general fund unencumbered cash balance was $119 million as of January 31st, 2021. Mr. Chair, the expenditures in the primary operating funds are within the approved budgetary limits. I thank Rachel Learns, as always, for the writing and presentation of this report. And so it is therefore, Mr. Chair, the recommendation of the College Administration that the Board of Trustees approve the Treasurer's Report for the month ended January 31st, 2021, and subject to audit. I so move.
Second.
Moved by Trustee Cross and seconded by Trustee Ingram to accept the Treasurer's Report, subject to audit. Are there any questions for Trustee Cross or Ms. Learns, or discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, no. That motion carries unanimously as well. We're to the monthly report of Dr. Bound.
All right, well, thank you very much, Mr. Chair, trustees. We will move into my report, so if we could have that brought up, please. All right, so, I want, I'm gonna jump right in to keep things moving along, because somebody told me we have a 90-minute executive session. But I want to start out with one of the team members that I've had the privilege of working with since I started. Karen Martley is retiring at the end of this month, and she has been a critical part of our leadership team. 11 years in her current role, roughly 27 years with the college. Here's what I want to reinforce, though, about Karen, and express my appreciation to Karen for. She listens well, she cares deeply for the people she works with, and the mission of our continuing ed and organization development work that she's led. There is nobody that I've met in my career that fosters teamwork, and fosters a sense of team, and caring deeply for each other, than Karen Martley. And so Karen, you will be deeply missed, and greatly appreciated. So Karen, thank you.
Can we oppose this? Is there-
I tried, and she agreed to stay around for a little longer, so maybe if I keep trying that, she will. So anyways, Karen, we wish you all the best. All right, I want to move along and talk about a subject that caused me some heartburn, but not as much as others are experiencing. We're down, and expect to be at the end of the semester, just under 10%, at 9.8% on headcount, 9.4 on credit hours. As we look to this next year, I want to remind ourselves, in the goals you set with me and for me, and so therefore the college, we've set enrollment growth goals for this coming year. 1% on the credit side, and 2% from a continuing education standpoint. And so, the work that we do between, the work that we do every day drives enrollment, because enrollment is made up of new students and returning students, and students who persist and continue with us. And so, our work together around attracting and retaining students and helping them be successful, not just students in a broad sense, but all students, and each and every student. So, work to do. I want to talk about CARES funding. So, we have received, or about to receive, three federal packages. As you recall, last fiscal year, we received approximately $5 million, half of that to students, and half of that for institutional use. If we look at then county and state funding of about another $1.7 million, and then we look at CARES II, which we received word in December, with the distribution, we've received of about $11.7 million. The expectation is at least 25% of that goes to students, and the other can be, the rest can be used for institutional needs. I anticipate, as we continue to work through, how do we allocate those funds to best support students, that the majority of that funding will be going to students. So far, we have, out of that 11.7, we have distributed approximately $3 million. And so, approximately $1,003,000 in direct distribution to students. Again, these are students who have, by the criteria we established in cooperation between our student success team, and specifically financial aid, in terms of how do we best distribute to students who are most likely to have need, factors such as they've submitted a FAFSA, they are degree-seeking students, that they have a demonstrated financial need through an expected family contribution of no more than $6,000. And so you start to put these things together, we've distributed so far $1,003,000. In addition to that, though, we set up an application process, a simple application process, whereby students can say, "I have additional need. Here's what my additional need is," and they can apply for additional aid, up to a maximum of $2,500. We've distributed an additional $1.7 million to those students, and continue to receive requests for assistance. We've learned now, most recently, in what we will refer to as CARES III funding, word that the college will receive, an additional $21 million, of which the expectation is 50% of that, minimum of 50%, will go to students. So it looks like, in terms of the distribution allocation, much like CARES I, but it continues to offer more flexibility around how we serve students. We know what the amount is, generally what the amount is, it's about $21 million. We're still waiting for a lot of clarification in terms of how to use and so forth. I think our challenge is to figure out how to best use those dollars to support students, to support our institutional needs, to support students, and that specifically close and assist in closing equity gaps. Look, there are things we, you know, that I would love to be able to say we could use the money for, that we could use the money to attract students. But clearly, as both in CARES II and in this current round, those can't be used to attract students to you, it's about helping students who are with you. And so, we're gonna have to walk through that fine line, and figure out how to best do that. But at the end of the day, we've got to use it to support students, and to provide support for initiatives on campus that support students, but it may be an expense on the college side. So, just wanted to give you a sense of what is, has come and what is coming. When you total that aid, it's about $39 million, it's a healthy chunk of money. And so, I appreciate the support that this allows us to provide for students, and to meet the needs of students as we proceed as a college. The end of the day, though, we've got to figure out how to use these monies best to support our students, so that they can persist, and they can complete, and so that they can take the knowledge and skills that they've gained by attending Johnson County Community College to enhance their career opportunities, and to provide for their family. So, that's, yes.
Just a quick thought, is this an opportunity for people to come back and finish courses? Maybe if they have just a little bit left, is this-
Oh, absolutely.
So there's lots of options.
Now, again-
Right.
Yes, I'm sorry for interrupting.
No, no, that's fine.
It certainly can be used to support students when they come back to us. I can't say to you, if you were a prospective student, "You know what? You come here, I've got all the money you need to pay for your classes." I can't use it to attract you, I have to, I have to stay on that fine line. So, we've got to think through, how do we do that in a morally, ethically appropriate, keep Andy out of prison sort of way? Because I have no desire to do that. And so we've got to be straightforward with how we do it.
It's the board treasurer that goes to jail.
Is it?
Well, good, we'll be together. At least I've got an attorney.
You have the right to remain silent.
Dr. Bound, I'm-
Yes, sir.
It was about 30 years ago, and I was a superintendent in Missouri, and that was when, in those years, the legislature approved gambling in Missouri on the platform that funding would go to education, and it would solve all of education's funding problems. And so people then developed the attitude, well, we don't have to have a levy increase, we don't have to have a local levy, because we have all of this gambling money.
Yeah.
And that, of course, did not pan out to be the salvation for K-12 education in Missouri.
For the rose.
The danger with this is that we've got all this money, and I think as trustees, we need to be very sensitive to understanding how those dollars can and cannot be used. There's going to be a lot of pressure on the administration, there's going to be a lot of pressure on lots of people to say, "You've got all this money, why do you need a half-mil levy for capital projects?"
Yeah.
And we have to understand that very clearly, I think, to help the advocates for the proper expenditures of these dollars, because as Dick Carter reported, the 212 million coming to community college is greater than the annual allocation they get from the state legislature. We have to be very cautious about understanding and explaining it well.
And again, these are one-time dollars, that once they're spent, they're gone, and they don't allow us to continue. We've got to use our resources wisely, and, yeah.
Are we clear on the window of time that that has to be? Not really.
We're still seeking more clarity.
That's what I thought, but I just wanted to make sure.
In essence, a year, but it's, when does the clock start, and so forth, so-
Thank you.
Isn't that like a federal agency, where like in September, everybody's gonna scramble around, start burning money? Great.
Yeah, Trustee Everett, Smith Everett.
Last year, I attended the National ACCT Legislative Summit in DC, and quite a few speakers spoke about the hurdles that the FAFSA process contributes to students being able to realize the financial aid they can receive, as well as actually just being able to complete it as a measure to go to college, and that many students are stopped at that initial process. So I wanted to request that we consider, although we can't advertise or reach out to those students, that we internally think of that as a real barrier for students who have never seen themselves as college-eligible, and that we find a creative, and yet still critical way that isn't just opening the doors for everyone, for that particular measure, the FAFSA, to be rethought in the terms of using this money, this short-term money. Because I will tell you, as a teacher in Overland Park who serves families that have never thought college was attainable, once one person goes and finds out it's not so bad, and they can do this, well, there's a whole community that will come along with it.
Absolutely.
And I think we have really, and with your leadership, have really been thinking about more broadly, those are the kinds of Johnson County citizens that we want to support and encourage to come to JCCC.
And if I may just jump in, Rachel or Randy, as I recall, is a FAFSA completion a requirement that comes with the federal dollars?
It is not.
It is not?
As a matter of fact, they keep changing the guidance on, you know, you need to be students who would be, who would be eligible for it, and that's one of the things that's evolved from 31 to current dollars. As a matter of fact, some of our most recent guidance has allowed us to consider strategies for our non-credit students, so we're really looking at-
Yeah, that's great.
... leveraging leverage, the learning that occurs through CE when you fund it, and that's kind of a newer turn of events for us.
Okay. That's great. That was another, I mean, there's lots of really creative ways you can get groups of people to see that they can be part of JCCC-
Absolutely.
-and our continuing ed department is a great opportunity there. But the other thing was, I actually just concluded this week, I was part of my district's CARES III task force, and we were charged with, we were broken out into different subgroups, where we were charged with coming up with priorities for our own domain, each of us were assigned to different domains, and we were charged with prioritizing what we wanted the next group to do with the funds allocated for us. So my question to you is, what internal mechanisms are you setting up, or do you have set up, that will determine how you prioritize, how you think creatively, and how we make sure that we do sort of a shared governance, or at least multiple stakeholder perspective on how to spend these funds?
And we've been pushing that out to our teams across campus, and, you know, with this additional influx of significant dollars, I mean, it more than doubles what we've received to date, we are going to have to engage our teams much more deeply than we have, more broadly, let me say it that way, to get the new creative ideas in helping us do this, and then we're moving our way through that process, so.
Mr. Chair-
Well, I would just follow up, sorry, my last thing, I would just follow up and say, I just, just like with the testing center, I'd love to be kept updated at, maybe not a board meeting, but somewhere, so we know, because as others have mentioned, I think we'll get a lot of questions from outside stakeholders.
Of course.
There's a lot of money, what are you gonna do with it? And I'd like to be able to-
Good question.
As I, as I've listened to this, I think, I don't know when we'll schedule a next retreat, given the amount of time we're gonna spend in executive sessions in the next, well, we don't know how long. But I think it'd be a great topic to kind of walk through the, all of the federal funding that has come here, how we've used it. I'm asking, I assume it is not included in our regular Treasurer's Report, that is audited and accounted for separately?
Correct.
So, at some point, we ought to see that, I think we owe that to the public as well, because it's still their money, even though it came from Washington, so, it started out here. So, okay.
Yep.
Trustee Lawson has a question for you.
That's exactly what I was gonna mention, Mr. Chair, is just some kind of way that either you and Dr. Bound can collaborate with Chris Gray to formulate how to talk about this, because I want to be able to talk to people, returning students, existing students, and I just want to be able to know how to do that in a way that keeps us in line. But then also, some type of a guideline, of a flow chart, of saying, "If you are this, if you are this, this is where you go."
Yeah.
Kind of like, you know, PPP, 1 and 2 draws, those things just are very helpful.
You bet. All right, then-
Remind everybody, we have a 3.5-hour executive session.
I'm going fast.
Every time we mention-
Here we go, here we go. So, what I would like to do then is just, as we move, and I'm not gonna walk through this in detail, I will- this in detail, I will send this to you.
It's not, you tell us what you, we need to know, Dr. Bound.
Yeah. Let me just tell you this, in the teal column in the middle, that's our strategic planning process. And for me, it's important for you to know and for our college to know how these pieces all fit together. So, up the middle of the chart is really our strategic plan. And when you, when you think about it, it's built on our mission of inspiring learning to transform lives and strengthen communities. That that's the basis of who we are. You layer on top of that the values work that we've been doing and then the, from a planning process, the, the three kind of sets of reports, the environmental scan work that was done, the DEI study work that's been done and continues to be done, and then the SWOT analysis sessions. We're taking that and using that to develop the goals, the goals, and then the multi-year strategies, and then the one-year action plans. They all feed towards realizing our vision, right? Which in draft form today says that we will be an innovative leader, an equitable student, access, learning, and success. And when you take that together, and I wanna focus in the middle there, there's the draft strategic plan goals. I sent this in communication to you previously, but there are really four categories of goals. Goal phrases, I'll call them right now, they're not goal statements yet, but really around student success, DEI, employee engagement, and community partnerships. That's bubbled up through all the work that we've been doing and heavily reflects the work of our SWOT analyses. And so, and then coming along, this will be then the metrics piece. But there are other work that's happening on campus, right, that, that allows that strategic plan to, to be realized. Certainly, on the left-hand side, in the lower yellow box, are the goals that you established for me. What I'm pleased by is that the Strategic Planning Council and Cabinet, on their own, came up with the four that's in the middle of the page. But that aligns directly to the work that you set for me and for us as a college. And so, to me, it's important to see that, that continuity of effort, and that's encouraging to me. And I've been very careful to keep my mouth shut and let the group do their work and, and to not try to guide to what an outcome needs to be. Because at the end of the day, it needs to be our college's plan, not my plan. And then I think about our work, and specifically your work as board, but together, president and board, is really around policy review, policy development, strategic plan monitoring, and to make sure that, that we're being true to our values and strategies. On the far right-hand side, then, are really the other pieces, that the budget planning work that is integral to what you do and we do together as a college community. Our facilities master plan work, our IS master plan work, the department level plans, and then the JCC foundation plan and strategies and priorities from a fundraising standpoint. These all work together to accommodate our vision. And as we move forward, you're gonna hear much less from me and much more from the folks that will be carrying out these plans in terms of what are the strategies that are being implemented? What's working? What results is it bringing? How does that tie together with metrics? So that, again, it won't be, you've heard a lot from me and I'm ready to step back and say to the team, now it's time for us to collectively start reporting to you and engaging with you and the board, as the board, around where are we going and what progress are we making? And so, but I felt like I needed to do this one time before we jump in to talk specifically around strategies, so, okay? All right, just a couple other quick things. Committee, the whole work begins later this month. We've given you the schedule, certainly through the balance of this fiscal year. And so, we have a whole process in place, everything from developing the agenda, you know, certainly, the chair will play a major role in that, we'll be seeking other input as well as, you know, from the leadership team of the college bringing the sorts of things that keep us focused on major decisions, strategy, policy, major purchases, those sorts of things, with a plan for formal evaluation in the September, October timeframe and eventually then, you know, in the February timeframe. We'll also do a process evaluation on the internal staff side of things in June, July timeframe, so that if, after doing this for a couple months, we see that's how it's working and if there are changes we need to make, we can do that so we keep it as efficient as possible so that you're getting the information you need in a timely basis, so you can review it, discuss it, and act on it at the subsequent board meeting. Our goal is that you'll continue to get the information five days in advance, so you've got adequate time to review that information.
And as I've learned more about this, and we put it off a month to get started, there's a lot more that goes on behind the scenes than we see. We see kind of the seamless, we get the packet, and now we're gonna get it through the portal. And Terry and the team in the office behind us and throughout the campus, this is a new process for them, putting all this together instead of on various broken-out departments or committees, putting it all together. And then having time between the committee, the whole, and the board meeting kind of was why we had to structure the timing the way we did. And I think it was all, a challenge for all of us to find the right time to do this. But we'll give it a go and we'll evaluate it as we go along.
Yeah. So, the last thing in my report is something we did last time for the first time, and I'd like to do in, again, tonight, and that is to introduce you to one of our students. And so, I believe that Brayden Elthoff is on the call with us tonight. And he's been a student ambassador for us, which means he's actively engaged in students as they're considering us and the early stages. And he's got a cool story. And so, Brayden, would you like to introduce yourself to our board of trustees?
Yeah, sure. Hi, guys. My name is Brayden Elthoff. I guess, thank you for having me. This is my first time ever being at a board committee meeting. I'm a student, I'm currently a student at Johnson County Community College. This is my fourth semester currently. I'm trying to go into civil engineering as a career. A little bit about me, when I, when I was, I guess, you want me to start from the beginning of story and then try to kind of go forward?
Sure.
Okay, cool. So, a little bit about me is, I'm a triplet. I was, I was diagnosed with dyslexia. And when I was really young, my parents were told by specialists or that I was never gonna be able to read, for one. And so, college always seemed very daunting to me, and my family was always concerned that I was never gonna be able to really succeed in college or be able to go into college. And so, I went to, originally, I went to Wayne Community College in Goldsboro, North Carolina, got my diploma in welding over there with, I also got a, the curriculum, Student Curriculum Award over there for, in 2018. In 2019, I moved to Kansas and started at Johnson County Community College in the welding program and worked towards my diploma. That same semester, I was hired as a lab tech for the welding program at Johnson County Community College. You guys have an amazing traits program. You have great professors, really top-notch. Coming from another program, it's, it was, it was, you know, it was incredible. Was part of the, was a lab tech for part of the move of changing the whole welding, was, no, I can't remember the name of it, HEB. HEB was converted into, from twenty-five or twenty welding booths to hundred-and-twenty-five welding booths, was part of the process of helping with that. And then that was just three months of that. Then continued to take classes through the normal path of welding. And then last summer, this past summer, I got my first, I got my associate's degree in welding technology with highest honors. I had a four-point-O at the time. And it was, it was, it was quite, it was quite a summer. And then this last fall, I was hired on as a student life ambassador. And I have been, I'm currently not a student life ambassador, had to step aside so that I could focus more on my studies. I'm currently trying to complete my Level Arts and General Science Associates. And, yeah, I currently have a three-point-nine, three-point-nine-five at Johnson County Community College, six credit hours. I have hundred-and-twenty-six credit hours in total with a three-point-nine-two, I think. And, yeah, you guys, this college is phenomenal. I've really enjoyed the opportunity to come here as a student, really to get to engage in everything that the college has to offer. I think there's a lot of students who come to Johnson County Community College and never really truly get to see everything that the college has to offer. And it's really impacted me with all the great things that the college provides, like the MRC and the Academic Resource Center. I'm currently in Capitalist right now. And I never would have thought, I would never that I'd ever be in Capitalist, I mean, Cap One. And, yeah, it's just a great opportunity. And I've loved getting to be part of the Johnson County Community College's team in student life and help other students achieve their goals.
Brayden, on behalf of the board, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Bound, for bringing us out. Another outstanding student, I think you probably get six votes up here that you can take over the rest of the meeting as chair-
Yes.
With a three-point-nine and how articulate you are. Any questions from trustees for Brayden? Are we allowed to do that?
Yeah.
Trustee Lawson?
Just more comments, Brayden. This is so exciting to see. This is definitely the best part of the meeting, to talk to students, and I'm so glad that you're here and talking to us. And I've looked at the civil engineering courses before and, you know, it's pretty interesting, the cost of timber that we're going through right now. So, I bet that those conversations are pretty lively in your classroom right now. And I'm curious about more sustainable materials. Are you guys talking about composite yet for home building?
I haven't gotten to take any materials classes yet, but my goal is to move swiftly from taking, I'm currently doing Cap One, general chemistry, and then public speaking. And then my goal is to take the higher maths, then to be able to transfer and learn more about materials. But I have learned a lot of stuff related to metal, in the metallurgy class that you guys offered to the welding program. Great class, also just like OSHA, the construction and industrial version with Scott Kilmore, great professor.
And with the industrial hemp is gonna be interesting, how those materials play into. So, you know, Dr. Bound, I would definitely like more updates from Brayden, so thank you so much.
Trustee Cross.
So, thank you, Mr. Chair, and I thank trustee Lawson for her comments and questions. Brayden, I worked for an environmental group or a couple on the East Coast, and there's a joke that the hippies that trained me have. And it's, it goes like this, you know why you should hug a tree?
Why?
Because they're almost all gone.
Lorax.
And my father and my brother went here, they're both civil engineers, and other brother is an architect, so I commend you. I also thank trustee Lawson for the suggestion of alternative materials, that's wonderful. And suggest to you biochar as, as a possibility for building materials. But with that, Mr. Chair, I'll thank the president for the presentation here and thank Brayden. Thank you.
I think trustee Cook.
Yeah, thanks Brayden for being here. So, the question is, what do you want to do when you get big, besides a civil engineer and create new inventions?
I mean, I would technically, my original, I guess, dream was to be able to like say work for NASA or SpaceX, but with the, related to that industry being very up and down, I figured doing civil engineering would be more straightforward and better for a career long-term. But I'm really interested in airport design and seeing if I can be, use that career as a better way to help my community in the future. Because for me, I really want to be able to give back to what people have given me.
Well, thank you and good luck to you. You've got a bright future ahead of you.
Thank you.
Trustee Ingram.
Brayden, I'll just say thank you. One of the questions that I hear more often than any is, why do you do this? Why are you a trustee? What inspires you? And it's students just like you that inspire all of us around this table. So, thank you very much for sharing your story with us tonight and best wishes.
Thank you so much for having me.
Trustee Smith Everett.
Hi, Brayden. First of all, I want to congratulate your parents on surviving triplets. That's amazing. But I actually, my day job is I'm an educator and I am a reading interventionist, so I help kids who are struggling with reader, reading. And so, when you said you were dyslexic, the flags went up. So, I want to ask you a favor, if you wouldn't mind doing a favor for me. I'm gonna ask you a question and then I want you to answer it. And I'm actually gonna play it for some of my students who are dyslexic and who are struggling. So, my question is, what would you tell your third or fourth grade self?
It takes work, but it is, is, it's doable. And the most important thing is having a positive mindset. I mean, I remember when I was a kid, I used to like fight with my mom over reading because I never, I didn't like it. It was really challenging for me. But perseverance and no matter, like no matter what people tell you that, oh, college, college may not be for you, it can be and it will, as long as you put in the work. I find that the majority of, the majority of classes that people tell me that are like really gonna be really, really challenging are not as challenging because you actually put in the work for it. It's all about putting in the effort and anything is possible.
That is amazing. Thank you so much. I am actually going to play this for some of my kiddos who are in just tough spots. Sometimes it's really tough and it's hard for them to understand that they can do it. So, thank you so much. You're part of helping other kids know that they can do it too. So, thanks. Your story is amazing and we wish you the best of luck.
Go Brayden.
Thank you.
That concludes my report. Well, Brayden eked out above wayfinding is the most important part of the meeting. That, that was incredible, as was last month's student, student. It's, it's great to be made to feel inadequate by the youth. I'll call them youth that, that we, we have learning here, and I know it's all age groups, but, okay. New business, I don't know of any. Old business, I'm not aware of any. We're ready for the consent agenda. The consent agenda is a portion of the agenda where there are a number of items that are usually handled in one, one motion and one, one vote. Any trustee has the right to take anything off the consent agenda that they would like to have considered individually or separately. Is there anything on the consent agenda that anybody wants to pull? If not, I'll accept a motion to approve the consent agenda as published.
So moved.
Moved by trustee Ingram, seconded by trustee Lawson to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carried unanimously. That brings us to the planned executive session. I would like to entertain a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing employer/employee negotiations. No action will be taken during this session. The executive session will last for one and one-half hours, ninety minutes, beginning at seven fifteen PM. Is that enough time? Five minutes? Everybody? You want, seven fifteen PM and ending ninety minutes later, I'm not gonna try to do the math yet, seven fifteen, eight fifteen, eight forty-five, eight forty-five PM, at which time, open session will resume at this location in this Zoom link. We'd like to invite Dr. Bound, Dr. McLeod, Dr. Weber, Dr. Harden, Dr. Cox, Dr. Girbeshawn Singh, Kelsey Nazar, Melody Rail to join this executive session. Do I have such a motion?
So moved. Second.
Moved by trustee Ingram and seconded by trustee Snyder. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
No.
That carries, aye or no?
No.
Carries six to one. Trustee Cross voting against it. We will convene at seven fifteen in the, in the Lidl conference room. We'll be back here at eight forty-five for those of you who are willing to stick around. Thank you. And we are back from executive session at eight forty-five PM. No action was taken during the executive session. There's nothing left on the agenda but a motion to adjourn, and I will entertain that.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by trustee Cross and seconded by trustee Ingram to adjourn the meeting. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Yes.
All opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you all very much.
Oh, you guys.